Good evening, everyone. We are unaffordably late this evening because we weren't getting on, a few of us, and I thought it was, I didn't realize it was us. I don't know what was happening. However, that was just sorted out and I hope that, I hope that everyone is on now. Motherwell, okay, she's on now. Okay, wonderful, because we were, we were not getting on. So however, without any further ado, I just want to say, give God thanks and praise for blessing us to be together again another evening, gathered in His presence, to continue to give God praise and thanks, and most importantly, to study His Word. As we know that we are advised to study to show ourselves approved unto God. And so this evening we study so that we can better ourselves and so that we can help other people also. So we blessed this evening for this opportunity where we are gathered to bring to an end our wonderful study on David, King David, King David, David with all the songs. And so we are doing that this evening and we look forward to a wonderful, spirit-filled, enlightening, inspirational time in God's presence as we study His Word. So without further ado, let me just open in prayer. Father, we thank you and we give you the praise this evening for another opportunity to gather on this platform where we can study Your Word. Lord, we know that Your Word is Spirit and it is life. Lord, we know that Your Word is life, it is health, and it is peace. And Father, this evening as we gather, we pray that Your Holy Spirit will take control of each and every one of us. Though we are in separate locations, we know that Your Spirit is not confined and You are not confined to time and space. And so, Father, we know that wherever we are gathered, we know that Your Holy Spirit is with us. And we pray this evening that You will enlighten our minds and open our hearts to receive from You this evening. Father, we pray that we will be able to make contributions that will help us to further be strengthened in Your Word and in Your course and to learn more of You. And Father, so that we will be able to bless and help others. We give you praise and thanks. Bless Sister Kushel and Sister Pamela even as they come forward this evening to present this session at this time. We give you thanks and praise for being with us this evening in no other name but Jesus' wonderful name. Amen and amen. Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. And amen. Praise the Lord. Over to you, Sister Kush.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everybody is able to hear me at a reasonable level because I haven't really sorted out what is going on with this sound system as yet. But hopefully you all can hear me well enough so that we can begin our conclusion of the study of the book of David and of the account of David. And we want to end on a celebratory note because we have talked about David in the context of, largely in the context of his one little translation that he did and we ended up talking about his sort of relationship with Saul there. And while it's easy to point and, you know, kind of just try to go through the, all the wrong things that he did and say, well, yeah, he should not do this and he should not do that, et cetera, et cetera. We do have to remember that he did a lot of wonderful things in the name of the Lord and at the end of the day, he was a man after God's own heart. All right? And one of the lasting things about that or the lasting projects that he has going on for him because all, I mean, he wasn't, he didn't build a temple, but he did help gather the materials, the temple and everything that's no longer there. And it might be easy to forget some of the little exploits he did, but when you crack the Bible and you read the book of Psalms for the most part, even though he didn't write all of them, he wrote about close to 50%, I think it's 73% he was responsible for. And when you crack the book of Psalms, you immediately think of David. All right? Because he was the person who was, you know, writing all those songs there. So we want to look at, well, we would be saying we're looking at the book of Psalms, we're really looking at the Psalms that are in relation to David. All right? Right, so Sister Pamela, we'll give you all a little short intro to the book of, to the book of Psalms and well then we will pick up from there and we will see how much we can learn and discuss. All right, so Sister.
Good evening, everyone. Just a little background and Sister Kushel will take over. The book of Psalms is referred to as the Bible's book of worship. And if you look at the Bible, it's found almost in the center of the Bible with that wonderful collection of songs and praise, prayers expressing the heart of humanity and the soul of humanity. The Psalms were usually sung. So it was, that's why we call it the Songbook. Israel used to sing this, the song, the Psalms in public. And when we look at the Psalms, you may see at the top to the chief choir master or to the choir master. In some Bibles, you see the word maskeel, which is the Hebrew word for Psalm. Well, we tend to think that the Psalms were written by David, all of, but it was not. There are 150 Psalms and they can be broken up into five books and I'm just going to break down how the books are separated and then I'll hand over. Book one is consists of Psalms 1 to 41 and these Psalms were written and compiled by David around 1,000 B.C. And book two, Psalms 42 to 72, written by David and the sons of Korah who were descendants from those who led the rebellion against Moses and Aaron, while Israel was camped in the wilderness of Peron. And this can be supported in Numbers 16. These were compiled around 970 B.C. to 610 B.C. Book three, Psalms 73 to 89, written mainly by Asaph, who served David as one of his choir masters. And these were composed around 970 B.C. to 160 B.C. And there's a probability that it was also compiled by Hezekiah or Josiah. Book four, Psalms 90 to 106, composed by a series of unknown authors and possibly compiled by Ezra or Nehemiah around 970 B.C. to 160 B.C. And book five, Psalm 107 to 150, again written by David and others compiled up to about 430 B.C. They, these Psalms include major songs which honor moments of holiness when men and women are led to the heights and flame. Minor songs lamenting willful and persistent sin that carries them to the very depths of darkness and despair. And there are songs of hope in circumstances of difficulty when the glimmer of a new dawn is glimpsed on the distant horizon. Then there are songs of despair when in the lonely hours of darkness, there seems to be no glimmer of light at all. So they cover a whole range of human passions, including those negative emotions, anger, frustration, jealousy, despair, fear, and envy, as the Psalmist expresses exactly how he thinks and feels, even cursing men and complaining about God. And some of those Psalms, I was saying on Sunday, some of those Psalms, when you read them, you really don't want to even voice it. You read it in your mind and you say, what is this? What are they saying here? Why are they saying? But when the Psalms are read, we have to read it in context of when the event took place and why it would have led to them writing that particular Psalm. All right? They also contain the more positive emotions, joy, thankfulness, hope, peace, and love. So this is basically the background, short background to the Psalms. But today we are going to look specifically, specifically at the ones that were composed by David. So it's over to Kushel to continue from there.
All right, Sister. Thank you, Sister Pamela. Who took most of my notes? Who took most of my notes? Oh gosh, I know we're supposed to be looking at, you know, David, David's Psalms. But I really, you know, because I wanted it also to be a sort of lobby because when you started, when you started looking at the book of Psalms, you realized that this, it's not just another book relating accounts of different things, like the way judges would record, you know, the time of judges and stuff like that. It literally is, you're hearing from the people that were involved in the work of God. So you're literally hearing what they have to say in their own words, in their own voice. And I think it's important for us to understand how well, it's important this book is in, or should be at the very least in our lives. So, I mean, this might be just rehashing some of what Sister Pam said, just a little bit, but I think it's important for us to go through it like this so that we understand. So the Hebrew word that I got, you got what, Miss, Miss, what's the word that you got?
Got maskeel, M-A-S-K-I-L.
Right. The word that I got for the book itself is tel-helim, which essentially means hymnbook, right? So book of hymns, that's what that means. Right? And that is the Hebrew word that they had for the book of Psalms at the time when it was separate apart from the Bible as we know it now.
This must be just simply means Psalm.
Oh, okay, okay. So the tel-helim is the book itself, the collection of it, where we compiled it, who was Ezra and they, and all the others. So tel-helim is the collection of the Psalms together and it was like a little book and they had the Hebrews incorporated in their worship. So just like we have, well, a decent, we have our blue book. Right? So they had those songs in there, those Psalms in there, and they would sing from it or read from it basically every day. The word that we know, Psalms, comes from the Greek title, which is Samoy, which is not much different from the actual word, right? Because as we know, the Old Testament was Hebrew translation and then had the New Testament, which was the Greek translation, which is called the Septuagint, Septuagint. Right? And so Samoy was the Greek word for the book of Psalms. It just means the same thing. All right? And why it's important for us to know that and to look at that is language develops a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot. All right? So sometimes the translations that we see aren't always the best because the persons who speak in English were using the words that they had at their disposal. And sometimes in English we use the same words to mean different things. For instance, the most popular one that I could think of is the word love. We use the word love for everything under the sun. However, different cultures had different words for different types of love. So we have filio, which we know is brotherly love, and then we have, you know, eros, which is, you know, passionate love, all of that. So translations are very important and it's important even in terms of context that some of these Psalms were written. So Sister Pam was talking about, you know, sometimes you read the Psalms and you wonder, well, wait, is this people really saying, boy? But likely there was a context to what they were saying and they were expressing themselves probably in the way that they know how, but in English, English often doesn't do a lot of justice to some of the other languages in terms of translation, right? So it's important for us to understand that these songs were, you know, for the main purpose of praising God. And if we're talking about praise and we're breaking down praise and worship and all of that, worship is literally defined as the feeling or expression of reverence and adoration. Well, they have for a deity, but we know it's for God. All right? So the songs that were written is for the express purpose of telling God how much we respect, which is a small word for reverence, and how much we adore or admire Him. That's the whole purpose of those Psalms in the first place. So when you think about it like that, the next time you read a Psalm, it wouldn't be just reading a Psalm for the sake of reading a Psalm. The purpose of having those things in your mind or looking over those Psalms is to have a moment of worship with Almighty God. Of course, we do that with our, again, we do that with our blue book, our hymnbooks, most of the time and yeah, yes, this is amazing.
Could you just repeat the definition of worship, please?
Worship, sure, no problem. Worship is the feeling or expression of reverence and adoration for a deity. Well, the English dictionary has for a deity, but we will say for God. Right? That is what worship is. It is a feeling or expression of reverence and adoration. That is what worship is. We can express worship, as we know, we could express worship in many ways. Although the aim should be to express, to worship with our very life. All right? It's not just coming and sweating down the place on a Sunday and then you're like, we could just do whatever I want to do. No. Your very, the very words that you speak, the way that you react to people should be worship as well. All right? Knowing that God is, that God is, right? Should be enough for us to honor Him with our life living. And that is what worship is. All right? Praise would fall and apparently would fall into that given, a part, a part of the, the, I was part of worship. Right? So praise would fall into that as well because praise is just admiration or showing admiration and approval. Right? So both of them are close, they are nose. At some point, there was, there were people trying to separate the two. But one, it's the same thing. I believe praise is more of a outcome of worship. I think that's an offshoot. All right? So the book of Psalms can be used to show God essentially how much we respect Him, but it must be done from a heart that is pure, that from a heart that is intentional about what it is doing and a heart that is real moralist, all right? It's not just to come and just do a ritual because the, the Hebrew people, they died for the Gallic of four in the first place, which was, you know, just coming and doing rituals for the sake of doing rituals. God wasn't pleased with that after a while. God desires sincerity and when David was going through his, his stuff, he often penned that from a heart that was most of, when it was joyful, he was, he was doing it from a heart of gratitude and worship, but when he was really hurt and really going through it, he was doing it from a raw sense of grief, right? Or anger, injustice, whatever he was feeling at the time. But he wasn't putting on a mask to try to, you know, come up with any fancy words. He was just saying how he was feeling and he was saying it to express to God in truth how he was feeling at the time. In that way, I just kind of want to mention that had, you know, even the persons who exist today, some of the more modern artists, if you think about it, they are psalmists as well. All right? Because the, the Psalms, once the focus, the whole focus of the Psalms were, you know, even though people were talking about how they were feeling, the main character in the Psalms was always God, always, always. The Psalms were always directed to God. They were always, you know, there was something about like the king, but you know, that could be, that could be swung. But the main character of those Psalms and the main focus of the Psalms at the time were of God. And as long as, and yeah, and as long as the song itself, regardless of how it sounds, right? Because I know for a lot of us, we feel as if gospel songs are supposed to sound a certain way. That is not the, that is not the point. That is not the point. The words, the lyrics and the intention of the person who is writing it or singing it is very, very important. So if we think about it, some of our modern day persons, some of, most of them are psalmists, all right? And had we just boxed ourselves into thinking, well, worship sounds only one way, we would have never left Psalms. We would have still be fighting up to find out what, okay, how, we'd have probably make up something for Sela because Sela is a musical, noted musical cue for the, for the music directors, the choir master at the time. We would have still be trying to sing Psalm 14 in some kind of weird way, right? So they are psalmists today. We just have to listen past whatever obstruction we feel in our minds we have built that gospel is supposed to sound a certain way. This is gospel too. All right? Wonderful. So we talked about name origin. We've talked about how language has sort of shifted what the name sounds like because it started off as tel-helim, which is Hebrew, and then it went to Samoy, which is Greek, and now in English we have Psalms and that's just the end of it. All right? So we talked about it. Sister Pam talked also about the way the book is structured. And she mentioned that the book is split up into five parts. All right? And what was interesting about that when I was doing the research is that the split into five was very much intentional. It was supposed to mimic the split up of the, what we know as the Torah or the five, first five books of the Old Testament. Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy, those are the five books of Moses, which is known as, what was, is known by the Jewish still as the Torah. And it was meant to mimic that. But even more interesting is that it, those five splits are further split individually. So each split has seven further splits. So section one is split into seven as well. I did not get a time to find out what the splits are, but it's split into seven and then those seven are further split into thirty somehow. So essentially, what the Hebrew people used to do when they had their worship time was they had a Psalm or a portion of the, of that book to say or to recite or to praise with every single day of the week. See, we like to talk about God being intentional, intentional, what he's doing every day. He didn't have an excuse. I mean, you would have to loop by the time you get to book five, but every day you would have something to go from or a song to sing. And that I feel like is the most convenient thing ever, 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 ever. Right? So your worship part of it was the arm cut up for you, more or less as a Hebrew person. And you didn't have an excuse to not sing, you know? The only thing, again, as I was talking about before, is that the, the Israelites, the Hebrew people probably got a little lackadaisical because it's very easy for you to fall into rhythm as opposed to being intentional with what you're seeing. Because you're saying the same things over and over and you must, you probably know it by heart. And then, because I'm, I'm guilty of this, sometimes you go on automatic because your brain knows, your brain knows the words. And sometimes your brain going on down the road saying, I will lift up my eyes to the hills from this corner of my head, but your mind somewhere else. Right? And that was what ended up making Israel. I don't know, this, God was not pleased with what they, he was, what they were offering unto him, right? What they were giving him, he wasn't pleased with that at all. God doesn't want an automatic something. He needs us to be present at all times. And that was the purpose of just, it was, he was, I mean, they were making it easy. David and the people who were collecting, they were trying to make it easy. But after a while, the Israelites, the Hebrews, then they probably get a little bit complacent when they were just reciting their stuff. Right? And we can't, we can't, yeah, we can't bang on them too hard because honestly, sometimes we do the same thing. Sometimes, and sometimes it gets as bad as you know, when to inflect your voice to go up, you know, when to go down, you know, when, at which point at the song to shout, you know, at which point at the song to roll on the ground, and that is not what God wants at all. Sometimes you get so caught up in the music or the rhythm or the meat of the song that you're not even thinking about the words. Sometimes you're just singing, you just get caught up by the meter and caught up with it either. Right? So that was a really convenient flow factor that I found about the book of Psalms there and how it is split up. And again, intention, God does everything intentionally. He doesn't, you know, allow us to just move like he by. And given that God was intentional with how this was structured, we need to be even more intentional about how we approach saying these Psalms and also how we use our other worship. Because, I mean, again, we have many, many, many types of music at our disposal. If you feel more comfortable, you could use the little hymnbook. If you're a little more, you know, adventurous, you could use some of the more modern songs, but the point is to be intentional about how you worship. All right? I think Sister Pam kind of also went through the types of Psalms that they were, right? If I'm mistaken, I kind of glanced through it. Where did I know that? Right? And to just kind of hash over some of them in case we missed the note. So in the book of Psalms, there are Psalms of lamentations and we know there is also a book of lamentations, but that was, that was Jeremiah's book. All right? So there's Psalms, there were lamentation Psalms and those Psalms were mainly to express sorrow. The book of Lamentations was like a funeral kind of thing, a funeral, like a funeral hymn. Because Israel at that time had been under bondage due to their own, due to their own misdoings. But they were under bondage and so in the book of Lamentations, I'm not talking about Psalm, but just segueing into Lamentations. In the book of Lamentations, Jeremiah was crying because of where Israel had reached. It wasn't much different from the Psalms that will, that are in there that are lamentation Psalms. Usually it's to express some level of sadness and distress. All right? Then we have hymns, which is generally what the Psalms were, are about. And when we think of Psalm, the book of Psalms, we think of them as being hymns. All right? And the hymns are an offering of direct admiration to God. So this is about telling God how wonderful He is and how amazing, how awesome God is, right? So those are the hymns. Then there are Psalms of thanksgiving. We don't know what thanksgiving is. We're supposed to be living thanksgiving lives because the way things go in, we ensure tomorrow coming. So we're supposed to be living lives of thanksgiving and being grateful to God for every breath that we breathe at this point. We ensure tomorrow coming. So we're supposed to be living lives of Thanksgiving and being grateful to God for every breath that we breathe at this point. There are also pilgrim Psalms or songs of ascent. This is, these are Psalms that the. Israelites would use when they would go up to Jerusalem to worship. And um, they would just, I guess, sing songs the while away the time because the walk was long, 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 right? And they would sing these songs to kinda keep themselves, I don't know, occupied and. I guess to prepare themselves sort of for worship, um, it, or what the way that. We, well, we haven't, pilgrims, I haven't gone on pilgrimage in a long time. But the way we um, Baptists do pilgrimage, pilgrimages, um. It's not much different, cause there's a lot of singing, like when we in the buses and stuff, there's a lot of singing and stuff like that. Um, I want to believe is more or less the same thing. Now you just know where we come, where it come from, right? Um, there are wisdom Psalms, there are also royal Psalms which focus on the king at the time. Um, some of it might have been David, some of it might have been Solomon, I'm not sure of the vision of them. But it would usually just be one Lord and the King, and of course, those would point back to Jesus Christ, right? Um, there are victory Psalms as well, there are law Psalms literally detailing, reminding the Israelites of the Lord, the Hebrew people of the Lord and us too. And there are also songs of Zion, which I want to believe are praise songs. Alright, so there are many different Psalms and they capture a wide range of. Situations that we have going on with us, even with us today, alright? Um. I will probably show that timeline last, cause I did send on the group chat. Um, a little timeline of, well, it shows the division of the Psalms as well, but it also gives us an idea of when the Psalms were written and. When, you know, the last one was written and how they were collected and stuff like that, but we'll probably do that last because. Um, when I was looking at the diagram, it was helpful to me, but I realized it, it, it also kinda looked a bit confusing. So, um, we'll look at that, uh, a little bit, probably a little bit later, hopefully I'll get it before seven o'clock. Alright, but let's, um, talk about the Psalms of David now, which is what we should have been focusing on in the first place. Alright, so I'm just gonna do a few of them and I'm going, I'm doing them in this way. To kind of tie it back into everything that we've studied about David thus far, right? So, um, I hope you're taking notes, because these are some of the Psalms that would have connected to some of the events that happened with David. In the, in the um, account that we know. So, Psalm three. Psalm three is the psalm that David wrote when he ran away from Absalom. Right, and as we know, David sent Absalom, ended up overthrowing him. After a forty year wait, um, and David had to essentially pick up, pick up his clue, pick up his stuff. And just get out, because had he not, Absalom may have very well killed him. And that's how, that's how thing it was. And so David, and I think this would qualify as a. It could be a lamentation, right? I would agree that it was a, is a lamentation. And so of the, for the. As a reminder of where that story is, it's Second Samuel fifteen and it goes all the way down to seven, chapter seventeen of Second Samuel. And David wrote that psalm probably when he was, um, just, when he had a moment to just sit down and he was thinking about, oh gosh. This thing is happening to me now and I don't know, I can't take it, I can't take it, I can't. Right, so Psalm three, I'm not gonna read it, as for homework, so Psalm three is when David was running from Absalom. Then we could go to Psalm eighteen. Psalm eighteen was when David was delivered from Saul. Well, one of the instances where David was delivered from Saul, because we know Saul was relentless in his pursuit. Um, with David, that man sought every opportunity, even though David did not reciprocate. That man sought every opportunity to try and end David, right? And for this particular Psalm, Psalm eighteen, the, the text that goes with the Second Samuel twenty-two, so if you want to read the background. As to why David wrote Psalm eighteen, you can look at Second Samuel twenty-two. And then we have Psalm thirty-four, right? This is when David, um. Psalm thirty-four, this is when David was, he pretended to be crazy. Yeah, in front of, um, King, no, King Ashish, this is King Ashish. Mm-hmm, right, um, it's, the account is found in First Samuel twenty-one, well, you have twenty. Chapter twenty-one, twelve, and it goes down to twenty-two, verse one. Yes, and we know Psalm thirty-four, that's, I will bless the Lord at all times, alright? So this is when he was pretending to be crazy and that is a very interesting account. Um, we didn't get to talk about it when we were talking about David, but that is a very, I think, I think I need you to go and read. How he ended up in that situation, um. Playing mad is, is, is not something that you would expect somebody to do, but desperate times call for desperate measures and. Um, David did what he had to do, so that's Psalm thirty-four. It didn't just, it didn't just come out of nowhere. David had, David was in a situation. Alright, and uh, yeah, he, he had to, he had no choice after he was out of it. But to just give God praise, because it could have ended otherwise, right? Instead, Ashish chose to, they tell him basically, let, let that man, man go somewhere, then let him go here, and that's how David was able to get away. Alright, then we have Psalm fifty, yeah, that's when, that is when the spitter, yeah, that is when the spitter was running on his bed, okay? Real performance, real performance, the man was a, the man who, David was a actor in a boy, oh gosh. Speaking makes spit come out his mouth, he was foaming, he real do, real do, he overdo, he do and he overdo. Right, but he was, he was in a predicament where he really could not evade that. Um, Psalm fifty-one, this is, this is a psalm that we should all know as well. Um, this is when Nathan confronted David about the adultery situation, adultery slash murder situation with Bathsheba. Um, context of course, again, Second Samuel eleven and twelve, um. Alright, let me save that for later, right, so, so that's Psalm fifty-one. Psalm fifty-two is when Dua the Edomites, Edomites tells Saul that David went to the house of. Ahimelech, um, First Samuel twenty-two, nineteen, nineteen, to be very honest, I am not. I do not remember the details of this particular account. Yes, First Samuel twenty-two, nineteen, nineteen. I'm not familiar with the, uh, details of this, this situation. So maybe a little bit later, and if somebody remembers what happened in that, in that scenario there, maybe you could share with us, alright?
Sister Keshel, as I recall, he was running from Saul and when he expected to be safe.
Mm-hmm.
The dog sold him out. So it was, he put, to cave, he was in a precarious situation when he expected to be safe. But um, that is from my recollection, I did not pull it up just now.
Yeah, no, I, I honestly can't remember what, what is, but so, I mean, maybe somebody could pull it up and confirm for sure, but thanks, Sister Nidine, for offering that. Um, Psalm fifty-four, oh no, um, Sister Pam, you're telling me about Psalm thirty-two. Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing that Psalm thirty-two was also when he was confronted by Nathan, so he write more than one, he was in real sorrow. Yeah, okay, so apparently Psalm thirty-two, um, which precedes Psalm thirty-four, of course. Right, is also when Na- um, David was, you know, in distress about, after having been confronted by Nathan, right? Um, apparently the dog was in real, in real distress after he went through, you know, after he realized the shocks. And oops, I made a boo-boo, right, so, but, but that was, that, that's, and that's the point, David was. I don't wanna say he's an emotional person, but I, he, he felt a lot and he was very creative, so he had an outlet. For, yes, he had an outlet for expressing himself, and he loved to write, and that's what, that's how he dealt with whatever he was going through, alright? Uh, I'm thinking I'm, I'm at Psalm fifty-four now. This is when the Zephites tell Saul that David is hiding among them. Um, so essentially these Zephites snitch on David and expose David to Saul yet again. Alright, and the context for that, um, well, you can read the whole of First Samuel twenty-three, but the, the text that they have with is Psalm. First Samuel twenty-three, nineteen, and David just had to, he just had to write down, oh gosh. I'm, I'm in trouble again, alright? Psalm fifty-six talks about when the Philistines sees David in Gath. And that comes from First Samuel twenty-one, and you can read verse ten and eleven, but of course, I would encourage you to read the whole thing. So that you can get the context of what is going on, alright? Um, we don't have a couple more, so don't worry, I just hope you're taking notes, so that we can, cause the whole point. Cause at the, at the, the point of, of giving you these examples is so that you can go and read the psalm. Read the context and then read the psalm again, so that you can understand where it's coming from, right? So like we continue to say, it's not just to read a psalm for the sake of reading a psalm. Sure, you can apply it to what going on with you. But to have a rich understanding of what this psalm really means, and so it can have a better meaning for you in your situation. It's important that you know the context, always, always, always know the context, don't just read it in a vacuum. Uh, Psalm fifty-seven talks about when David, again. Fleeing from Saul into a cave. I want to believe that this is when s- um, he was hiding. And Saul came in and he didn't know, and David was like, and David's men were like. Yo, this man coming, go ahead and, and kill him. I believe this is when he cut off his skirt. I believe this is what happened. This is what, um, the psalm came out from. Alright, um, First Samuel twenty-two, one, or you can go to First Samuel twenty-four, three. Again, read the whole chapter so that you can get context. Psalm fifty-nine talks about when David, when Saul sends. Uh, men to watch David's house in order to kill him. Again, um, Saul after David's life, once again. And David just had to write down, he was just feeling too much, so he just had to write down, you know, wait, what, you know, he had to ask God some questions. He had to ask God some things, right? So First Samuel nineteen eleven is the context for, uh, Psalm fifty-nine. Yes, nineteen eleven. And we have Psalm sixty, which talks about David's victory over Transjordan, alright? Um, and that would have be, that would be, uh, it could be the victory psalm, I'm not sure a hundred percent, but it could be a victory psalm, or it could be a psalm of praise, one or thirty-two. Alright, and the context for Psalm sixty is found in Second Samuel, chapter eight. And you can read from verse one to fourteen if you don't already have time, but if you have time, read the whole of Second Samuel, chapter eight. Then we have Psalm sixty-three, which is David in the desert of Judah. That may have been a series of events that may have happened there. Alright, the context for it, yes, it would be a series, cause there's a couple chapters as well. So Second Samuel fifteen to seventeen, First Samuel, but they have First Samuel twenty-three. And it was says fourteen to fifteen, but of course, please read the whole of First Samuel twenty-three, and this is the context for Psalm sixty-three. Where David is in the desert of, Second Samuel fifteen to seventeen, First Samuel twenty-three, fourteen to fifteen. Um, the last one that we have that is in relation to David for now. Because David did write these are not seventy-three Psalms, isn't one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Well, like, and I got one from Sister Pam, which is thirteen, these are just thirteen Psalms that we talked about, David wrote seventy-three. So all of them will have little, um, accounts behind them, and it's important that we take the time to just understand where they are coming from. Last one we're talking about that I'm giving you is Psalm one forty-two. Um, the context for this is First Sa- again, First Samuel twenty-two, um, verse one or twenty-four, three, which would. Essentially be the same as the reference scripture for Psalm fifty-seven. And this is when, again, when David flees from Saul into a cave. So we realize a couple things that David wrote multiple Psalms. For sometimes for, yeah, for one occasion, sometimes one event would happen to David, and he would. First Samuel twenty-two, one or twenty-four, three. So sometimes he would be in one little situation. And he would write multiple Psalms about the same thing, alright, because he just needed to get. That emotion out there. He needs to get, what he was, he needs to ask what questions, he need to find out what was going on, he need to express the sadness he was feeling. And then sometimes when he overcame, he would write multiple Psalms too, about how happy he was that God brought him through, whatever he was going through. Alright, and those are just thirteen of the seventy-three, the sixty other Psalms that you could look at from David's end. That would talk about his experience and kind of explain, whoops, what he was feeling in the moment. Alright, um, of course, there are other Psalms that were not written by David, as we know, mm-hmm. So just for your knowledge, um, David wrote seventy-three, as I keep saying, Asaph wrote twelve. And I want to believe that he's seeing Asaph, Pharaoh's guy, the same guy, no, not the same guy, different guy? Okay, he, okay, oh, Asaph, right, good. So Asaph, Asaph, two different people, same wisdom though, that's the way, anyway. So Asaph, he wrote twelve, um, descendants of Korah. Who are involved in a lot of the musical Psalms, they have ten under their name. Um. Then we have Ethan and Human, the Ezraites, who have about two, thereabout. Right, then we have Solomon, who wrote one to two, I'm not entirely sure. Is one, yeah, and the researcher that I saw, one or two, cause they're not, they're not entirely sure of some of them. And then we have Moses, who wrote the Torah, who just has one song, which is Psalm ninety. Alright, and we know that Psalm talks about essentially how the Israelites went over the Red Sea, et cetera, so that was a little reminder for the Israelites and them. Um, I think it would have been a song at one point too, it was a song, right? So that was for them to sing, to remember. To remember everything that God had done for them, what they had passed through, alright? Um, and then we have the remainder of the Psalms, cause those do not total to a hundred and fifteen, as a hundred and fifty Psalms that we have in all. They are the rest that we just have no information. We don't know who wrote it, we have no clue. Um, probably if there are scholars who did the research, they might be able to tell us, or guess, the best guess, who would have been in charge of those. But some of them, we just have no information, and unfortunately, we have to be uncomfortable with that, we have to be comfortable with that, alright? So it's a compilation of different people with different experiences with God. All expressing the same thing, that the God that we worship is supreme. That he is awesome, that he deserves every bit of praise. Sometimes, you know, we asking that same awesome God, well, wait till you do endure it. What, what, what is happening? What is happening, right? And that is okay too, alright? Okay, so I'm, so you see you learn something new even when you're, even when you're prepped, you learn something new. Apparently, King Hezekiah was responsible for ten of them. Yeah, it's two, it's two for sure, okay, alright, good, so we confirm this too, Solomon, to Solomon, for sure, we confirm this too. Right, and Hezekiah wrote ten and then while the balances, we don't know, we don't know, we just don't know, alright? Um, another thing I'm going to just double back the structure really quickly, um. At the end of each section, the very last psalm in each section is known as the doxology, which brings to close the entire. Quote-unquote book, alright? And Psalm one fifty, which is one of the shorter Psalms. Is the grand doxology or the ending of the praise part, praise and worship. Mm-hmm. Alright, just like we have all this doxology at the end. And our Doxology. Um, Psalm. Right, so let me see if I can get the, let me see if I can get the divisions for you really quickly. So the Doxology for Book One or Section One would be, come from Psalm forty-one, and it would be verse forty-one. And it would be verse thirteen, and it ends, praise be to the Lord, the God of Israel, from everlasting to everlasting. Amen and amen, and that's how it would go for all of them. Um, and then for the book, for Book Two, it ends on Psalm seventy-two. And the Doxology for that is in verse twenty. And it simply says, this concludes the prayers of David, the son of Jesse. So they let us know that he done it, ain't no more hain for David. But that's not true, because there are a couple of Psalms sprinkled in, that's, yeah, yeah, but it was for this book. But there are a couple of Psalms from David sprinkling after that. Book Three, the Doxology is praise be to the Lord forever, amen and amen, which comes from Psalm eighty-nine and verse fifty-two. Book Four, um, it ends at Psalm one or six, but it doesn't actually give us what the Doxology is. Of course, Book Five, it ends at Psalm one fifty, and, um, it just essentially says, praise the Lord. So every session ends with praise unto God for everything. Yeah, for whatever, has brush. Right, so it encourages, it encourages us to praise God for who he is and for what he has done for us, alright? Um, again, the list that I gave you of Psalms is not exhaustive. And if you, uh, you should be feeling adventurous by now. Um, you can take some time to look at the Psalms that were given, as well as, um, the, the ones that remain, which will be sixty others, alright? Um, I did intend to have persons share their Psalms, right? I wonder if we could squeeze that in real, 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 real quick, right? So, um, we were supposed to, for those of us who saw the message in the chat. We were supposed to share Psalm that was either A, your favorite Psalm, or B, a Psalm that expresses exactly where you are in your life right now. Alright, um, and just to, to kick it off, um, I think, cause you know, I gave the assignment and it was like, wait now. I don't have a favorite Psalm, pussy. But then I thought about it, and you know, for me, Psalm twenty-seven, it might be an easy shot, but it's, it holds a lot of, of water for me. Um, so of course, parents are very, you know, influential in, in my, in, in the way that I, I faith. Cause it's probably not the best way to say it, but, um, my grandmother played a, a, a big, big part in my life as well. And this was one of the first Psalms, around Psalm twenty-three, everybody knows Psalm twenty-three, so that's a easy shot too. Um, but this was one of the first Psalms that she made us learn, that and Psalm fifty-one, when we were getting ready to get baptized. She made me and my sister say that Psalm, right, because she was adamant, you know, this is the way to start off, you know, this new thing, right? But Psalm twenty-seven was the Psalm that she, you know, taught us. And, um, encouraged us to say every morning before you go, make sure yes, when you're praying, make sure you say Psalm twenty-seven. And I never understood why, but now that we are studying the account of David. And I know where that Psalm came from, it holds a lot more meaning now than before. Before it was just because, you know, she was the one who was, you know, influential. But now it holds a lot more meaning and it holds water outside of that for me. So Psalm twenty-seven is my Psalm of choice, yeah? So that's how we're gonna go, and we're gonna do that really quickly, because we're almost out of time. So anybody in the corner by me want to go next? Okay, or somebody, somebody on the platform, somebody on the platform, anybody want to share?
I do apologize, I did not realize that we had the homework. I knew that the Psalms were separated, but I didn't realize we had the homework. And it is a little difficult for me to say my favorite Psalm, because I have so many of them. And I, I think the, um, David was a man after God's own heart. And what I would like to add is that God is very passionate about us. And that passion that David had, he expressed in the Psalms. And we have to realize that God is concerned about every single aspect, he's passionate about us. And just by looking at those Psalms, we need to actually see God actually looking out for us as well. Um, in terms of our favorite Psalm. I like one, I like two, I like three, I like four. I like eight, I like nine. I, hey, there's something in so many of them that touches me. And if we really look at the Psalms, I think it would be very difficult for us to have a favorite Psalm. If we, um, dissect it and analyze it. I think it would be very difficult to have a favorite Psalm. But I just like so many of them, and the Psalms are so special.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Right, um, one and twenty-three, Psalm one and twenty-three, right? He that dwelleth, and then the Lord is my shepherd. So we could, we could read those Psalms and we're going to see what those Psalms really, what it was really saying in those Psalms. But just to touch on praise and worship, we talk about that, and Madame Maslin had asked what you said about, um, worship and praise. Well, praise, the praise of God is the acknowledging of his perfection, works and benefit. Right, so that is far as, it has a lot more to it, but that's the nitty-gritty of praise. And then worship is the church of Christ is not only the representative body on earth. It is also the temple of divine service, continuing and perfecting the worship of the past. We will get into that when we start to do the study on that. The service include, uh, includes offering presented to God and blessing received from him. The former embraces the entire ordinance of worship. Uh, with its nitty-gritty reason and observation, the latter embraces the means of grace. The common prayer and the word and the sacrament. So when, there's a lot in praise and worship. And those are the things we're trying to get down back where God is concerned. So I think because it is included in the Psalm, and because you mentioned it, we have to get into that. Probably when we finish the, um, when we finish David and all his, all his Psalms and things, but the Psalms were, the Psalms, most of them were written for. Um, because David realized that God was a, was a sovereign to him. And merciful to him as nobody else could have been. And, um, you say, um, we have one or two other people wrote some Solomon two and what, Hezekiah and those fellows. But the Psalm really teaches us a lot of things, but Psalm one and Psalm twenty-three. Have the boots for Christian people to understand. It says everything that you want to know about a human being. God bless you and everyone on the platform have a good evening, God bless.
Yes, thank you, brother Mike, and I agree, we do need to, I mean, we said that about all the study that we're doing. We do need to go back and just look at it again, because there's so much at the bottom there, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot. We just kind of skim in the surface. Alright, I know we're running out of time, but anybody else want to share their favorite Psalm? Or they want to share a Psalm that is very important to them? I know Sister Nadine, I know how you feel, again, when I was thinking about it, um, I realized I didn't actually have a favorite Psalm. Now that I don't like the Book of Psalms, but I didn't actually have a favorite Psalm per se. But if you have a Psalm that you really feel like, you know, is, is your moment right now, share that, right? So, um, anybody else want to do that really, 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 really quickly? Before we wrap up this, um, really enlightening story, um, account, study of the account of David?
Yes, it's a good show, good evening, everyone. Um, like Sister Nadine said, there are so many Psalms that, you know, mean a lot to us. But for me, Psalm twenty-five spoke to me during my period of, um. Of family problems, you know, my husband and I, this Psalm meant a lot to me. It was a Psalm for guidance and protection. So I continued, I, I really loved that Psalm. And, um, David's Psalms is express a heart devoted to God. His music comforted King Saul, we saw in that, we saw that. It influenced his nation and continued to change lives to be. David wrote and sang a Psalm during every turn or incident in his life. This tells us that he trusted God for everything, every situation he sought God's guidance. And also. When before God for forgiveness, knowing when he sinned, it was God he offended ultimately and not man. So the Psalms to me, like David, was for every, it's, it's for every situation in our life, thank you.
Wonderful, I'm just have one more, I know, I know everybody will be rushing to share. Um, but we'll just have one more, anybody want to share Psalm that is important to them? Or some, one that they do like, just have one more, and then we will wrap up for this evening. Alright, I guess there's nobody else that wants to share, and that's okay. Alright, so what I would encourage us to do is to take a look at the Book of Psalms again. Or the, the Psalms that we, we talked about, that I mentioned today, we didn't really talk about them, I kind of just listed them out, and. For, cause everybody has the way that they do their personal study. But if you would like a little flip, try to look at the Psalm, these Psalms, in context of the accounts that we mentioned, alright? You can really probably read a Psalm for years, you're probably reading Psalm, like pick Psalm eighteen. Right, and you're just reading it, and you're going through the motions, ting, 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 ting. And you're not really, you've never really stopped to consider what was the backstory of this Psalm. Now is a good time to go and do that, simply because it would help you understand the emotion that the person was feeling. Probably the emotion that you put in on it is something totally different to what the person was feeling at the time. And it's very good for us to be knowledgeable, because as you continue to say, what God says with, my people perish for a lack of knowledge. That is why a lot of things are happening in the church, in the nation and stuff like that. And because we don't know, we aren't aware, we don't have the information. And we continue to get caught up in the same things over and over and over and over again. So, let's get knowledgeable and let's start to sing some songs, alright? Um, other than that, this brings us to the end of the study of the account of David. Um, the next person I think we're supposed to look at is Joseph, who is the husband of Mary, who was the stepfather of Jesus. Um, and for that, I, we are gonna ask for a volunteer in this instance. To prep a presentation for us, so that we can, um, look at Joseph and study him. And I mean, there's not, I'm not gonna say that, cause the last time I said it's not a lot, we ended up having a whole lot, so. Um, we would be taking volunteers, and if you do not volunteer, we will be voluntold, just say it in front. Alright, but other than that, thank you very much for a wonderful eight weeks, I think we spent on David, seven to eight weeks. And we hope that it was informative, and as we move on to Joseph, we pray that, you know, he will be open to learning even more. About these persons in the Word of God, alright? So, um, God bless you all, and I will hand over to Sister Maslin.
Thank you very much, Sister Kushele, oh! Wow, it was truly, this session was truly very informative and inciting and exciting and everything. And I hope that as we leave this platform, we will go and look at these Psalms, these thirteen Psalms that you mentioned, and only thirteen. And, um, read also the backstory to this Psalm. Uh, as, as you kept saying, all the things have to come to an end, so we can't just go on and on and on with this. But in our own personal, uh, personal time, we can always go through and see, uh, what we can get. From these Psalms and how we can really take that good pattern of that praise time and that pray time and that worship time. And giving anon glory to God for who he is and for what he has done in our life. What he has done in the past, what he's doing now, and what he will continue to do for us. Um, like everyone else, I'm sure, on the platform. When I read that favorite Psalm, it was like, no, I can't pick one, because there are so many that means so much to me. But we, we just continue to give God thanks, you know, um, Psalm sixty-one, that is what, when my heart is overwhelmed, right? So Psalm sixty-one, David wrote that when he was far away from home and the safety, you know? And he had a desperate cry for help, you know, he was in despair and all of that. So all these things are so very enlightening, so good to know. And we realize that David prayed so much also in the Psalms, because he knew that God was keeping him safe and guiding him. He knew that God gave, God gave him faith to deal with his hardships. So David prayed and praised God through his painful moments, when he fell short, when he was humbled, and when he wandered miserably. So we thank God for David's example, and we too can take pattern from that. So we bless God this evening for our session, and as we say, when we have concluded here, we will see if anyone will take up the challenge. To volunteer to do the upcoming study, uh. Yes, or presentation, as you said, and we will see where we go from here. May God bless us this evening as we come to a close at this time. And we say, Father, we thank you for being with us this evening, thank you for your words of enlightenment and enrichment and encouragement. Lord, we thank you, because it's always exciting to sit and to study your Word. And Lord, we just thank you for even going into the Book of Psalms with David. And his life and how he compiled and how he sang and how he gave you praise and how he worshipped you. Father, help that we will, we too will follow that same example. And we will give you the praise, the honor and the glory for what you have done and for what you have, are doing in our lives. So Father, as we leave this platform tonight, Lord, we pray that you will bless every heart and bless every family. As we continue to live for you and be guided by your Holy Spirit, walking in the Spirit. We just thank you and we just praise you this evening in Jesus' name, amen. Now may the saving grace of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, the love of God, the fellowship of the Holy Spirit, rest and abide with us all now and forevermore. Glory be to the Father and to the Son and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now and evermore. As it was in the beginning, it's now never shall be, will without end, amen.